Good evening. So I'm going to be judging now. What's up, you see? Now, what are you doing? Maybe for a little bit time this morning. I'm very good. You know, months away, you're good. Yeah, I can see I've got the books, right? Anytime you want. Maybe do something like a building inspection or a field trial. And this is going to put you in some kind of like mentality. So is that active or is it separate?
How you doing?
Yeah, that was before this.
Ready? Okay, good evening. We will start with our pledge and then we'll have a moment of silence for Francis Edward Gibbitt, former Orange County Legislature Director for District 15, nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-five. John Diggan, former Director of Purchasing for Orange County. Richard Lee, Father of Highways Fire Department Assistant Chief. And Tom Crawford, Public Service Lieutenant.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its core.
Thank you. So. We get in a moment, we pass a resolution. In support of our Jewish community. We recognize May as Jewish American Parenthood Month. We need to support our Jewish community now more than ever. Um, we decided to invite Rabbi Morstein come up and say a couple of words. He's been a great partner to the town. Always doing them in all lighting in December and I was hoping to bring him here and have him say a couple of words. Uh, Morstein, come on up.
Anyway, she believes in the Sabbath.
Hit the button at the bottom. Good evening. It says in the Torah that when you have an elected officials, they have a very special power. Because ultimately they represent not just the people, they represent the community at large. They represent a power, holy scroll power. So, as we know, the Jewish nation around the world has suffered tremendously since October seventh. We say on Passover, there's a paragraph that says, in every generation towards the Nazis or the Spanish opposition throughout history, people tried to kill the Jewish people. And God always helps the Jewish people survive. But today, it's happening in the world. Sadly, many places, the hate, the amassing against the Jewish people. You know, during May, I was walking the streets, saw a woman. You know, I met a guy in my life, I don't ever knew the guy in my life. I had not, I didn't know him. You, I was just walking the street. Like a person close up, but next week opened his window and said some words, went up the repeater. I, what did I do? What did I do? Did I look like the way I look? And this has no question about it. And what's happened in Israel, when they called me in Orange County, a real organization called me, they wanted to arrange a uh something for rab, putting the Jewish people and some Muslims together for a rally piece. And they asked if I would come and I would support them, bring out the constituents, bring out the Jewish community. And my response to them was absolutely, I'll be the first one there, on one condition, one condition. I have no problem saying that every time any human being, anyone, Jewish, Christian, Muslim, doesn't matter who it is, gets hurt, gets killed, we feel down. No human person should be killed. So I said, I'll come to Israel and we'll support it, one condition. But after I say that, I want their representatives to say that they also agree. And, you know, Jewish person in Israel should speak on October seventh, and they refused to agree to that statement. And I think that hits on the nail. That we have to be human, we have to be kind to each other, good to each other. So I ask of you, representatives, possibly one of the most busiest cities, areas in Orange County. And this is a responsibility we all carry. To love each other, to be nice to each other, doesn't matter what race, what color, what religion. We want to live in this world together, we have to be united. So I want to thank you, thank you for recognizing the Jewish month, the Jewish Exodus month. I want to thank you for putting up the menorah every year. You said that all of you should have a lot of health, a lot of health, all of us, a lot of good things in our lives, you always remember. Always remember, September eleven, September eleven, so many Americans are killed, they won't even do us. If we don't romanticize it, the Jews today will be soiled as tomorrow. On that note, God bless us all, God bless America. As we say in Hebrew, angeis shal chaim, gotta be strong, gotta be happy, gotta be powerful. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate those great words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rabbi, what's your take?
I'm telling you, why, because I make time off. So I have a bunch of boys in the family, many pups and girls, and four boys in a row. So my first boy, for some reason, my oldest boy, I don't, someone sent it in to the senator or whatever it is. And we got a letter in the mail from the senator, it's at the postcard, it says Washington, D.C. Whatever senator was there a few years ago wishing him months of hope for his parents' return. So he framed it in a joke, so all the other boys asked him, they say, Dad, where's your senator's letter? When's my letter? Go explain this. So I, this is great. I love, I love, I love papers, but we should get many of them. Yeah, so with all of you coming here today, uh, helping us celebrate our Jewish American Parenthood Month. It's, um, the time of year that's meant to recognize you, that you're not a supporter of such a kind of law, but thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. God bless you guys. Don't you affect on the earth. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Some people are new on this board. Steve is, he's welcome. Welcome to here. Next, we have public participation, three minutes, agenda items only. Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the zone? Agenda items only. So whatever's on your agenda.
I know what you want to talk about, not yet.
Uh, me and Noah, we've got correspondents. Do you have any? Okay, I have one correspondence that came to me. Uh. To whom it may concern, I, Scott Morgan.
Dower.
Dower, owner of Morgan's Mowing and Landscaping. Would like to apologize to the town of Walker residents for their appearance at the Booming Bird Cemetery. Due to personal illness and primary weather delay, the mowing fell behind by more than a week. We have since rectified the situation and moved the mowing schedule up to today, begin Friday, to make sure all great sites are mowed and trimmed for the Memorial Day weekend. Sincerely, Scott. Can you say that?
Morgan Dower.
Morgan Dower, Morgan Mowing and Landscaping. Nothing else. Next, we have resolutions.
Resolution, the town of Walker, the town of Walker, appointing the questions with the salt for part-time police dispatch. Now therefore, we hereby resolve the town, where the town of Walker, the head of funds, Megan Convo to the official of part-time dispatch, the service and capacity of the town of Walker Police Department, effective June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, provided that, one, all background checks are satisfactory and completed, two, all appropriate documentation was submitted and accepted by the Land Management Department, including the resources of the Civil Service Department, made the motion.
So move second question. Um, well, typically, we, we also post a statement how much the salary is on these things. They're rejoined by our.
Um, based on the minimum contract.
Okay.
Usually when we're posting salaries, it's, um, for non-union persons that are subject to the handbook, you know, seasonal workers, part-time workers.
Okay, it's, it's subject to the.
You can add, you can add everyone, but it's subject to the contract.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Van Loon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Following one.
I think we did that yesterday.
We did that last night.
Right, yes. With that, we'll move on.
So just a statement on that, for the public's awareness. So the resolution was to appoint, reappoint, because it's every year, uh, the director for the, um, lifeguard at the park. The reason we did it last night was because the start date was moved, so he can get started as soon as today. And so that's why we did it yesterday, last night. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we've got to start counseling comments, give it a report, we'll start with Councilor Cohen.
Okay, I'll start with, uh, highway. So for the month of May, the Highway Department has been working on the following projects. In the shop, we've received one of our, our new tandem trucks. It was actually our retention truck. After that, the shop found some issues with the paint, a few hydraulic fittings were leaking. And we had sent it back to the shop to have the few issues corrected. They're also working on our dump trucks, milling equipment, since we are still, since we're starting our road milling next week. We should have all equipment serviced and running by then. The shop also took ownership of their new scan tool, and they say it's working great. This was greatly needed and appreciated, it allows the shop to scan codes for our dump trucks, but also for the smaller vehicles. Uh, in the first ward, we've completed all drainage work that needed to be done for paving on Tarmel and Seaman Road. We're now mowing, uh, roads, using the roadside mower and trimming trees as needed. In the second ward, St. Andrews Court is completed with topsoil, paving seed, grass looks nice. The road is prepped for asphalt and milling, and that will be completed in June. On Beth Drive, we created an asphalt swell between the intersection of Monica and Braymont Road. Hopefully, this will solve the ice condition that is created every winter. However, since the insulation of that swell, the area has dried up, and that's really important. And I do believe that this is actually gonna work. Um, if it's, if it dries up quickly, uh, by the time, you know, the temperature drops, we won't have that, that icy pavement, so. On James Court, we installed a new catch basin, uh, hundred and sixty feet up the road. Hopefully, this will help deal with some of the drainage issues on that road. In the third ward, we did some surveying on Belmont Avenue, to see if we can add a second eighteen-inch culvert pipe at the end of the road. We did, didn't see any major utilities in the way, and we are proceeding with adding a second eighteen-inch culvert. This will help water flow better as it comes down from Fairfax Avenue, Brookline Avenue, and Ridgewood, uh, Ridgewood Avenue. We also created our first permanent speedhopper on Belverne Avenue, located between Avenue C and D. Out of the fourth ward, we have completed all milling prep in this ward. We'll be milling Bowser Road the first week of June, if everything goes as planned. The Howells Road culvert has been replaced with the two thirty-inch culverts. Ten walls installed, and we're letting the road settle prior to paving over the two new pipes. The realignment went perfectly, and the water now has a straight path to follow. We've completed the first phase of drainage work on Counter Drive. The two hundred feet of twenty-four inch main drainage pipe has been replaced. An extra catch basins installed to handle the water coming down from the mountain. I'm hopeful that after paving is completed, that we can start work, working up the hill on Counter Drive and replace eight hundred feet of eighteen-inch culvert pipe. And the laterals. Uh, the metal pipes, they're, they're failing due to their age. Um, I do have a list of Let me do that one. There it is. Okay, so. We have the new pavement. Um, we're gonna be just as aggressive paving this year as we were last year. But we've got to mill the roads first. And in order to get that accomplished, we can't have any cars parked in the streets. So I just want to announce what days we plan on milling roads. Uh, Thursday, May thirtieth, Evan Court, Mayor Lane and Mariah Lane. Monday, June third, Sarah Lane and Shag Bark Street. Tuesday, June fourth, Acorn Avenue, St. Andrews Court and Lafflamon and Lane. Wednesday, the fifth, Longview Lane and Seaman Road. And Thursday, the sixth, Bowser Road. Um, so here, here's, you know, weather permitting, right? So if you happen to be, say, on Sarah Lane, you live on Sarah Lane. If we don't get there by June third, it's probably because of the weather. So please don't park your car out in the road on June fourth. We might be coming on June fourth, you know what I mean? So wait until your road has been milled, um, until you, please, car back out in the road. Uh, it could possibly be towed, and we don't want to go through that mess, right? So that's all I have for highway. Um, Veterans Affairs, so the parade, Memorial Day Parade, which was gonna be the first time that it would be joint between Post one fifty-one and Post eleven eighty-one. Uh, in probably five years, six years, I don't remember, but it was, it's been a little while since the two groups got together and, and put together a parade. Uh, but unfortunately, due to the weather, it's been canceled. Uh, they're looking ahead. Um, but there will be a ceremony at the Elks Club, uh, at eleven o'clock, so if you'd like to attend that. Uh, comments, so. On April thirtieth, it marked the forty-ninth anniversary of the ending of the Vietnam War. And we held our ceremony to dedicate the entire wall that was completed. We were worried because of the weather, but the weather held out for us, we were tracking it hour by hour. And, uh, it held out till probably about forty-five minutes after we were done. But it was a great ceremony, about a hundred and fifty people showed up, a lot of Vietnam veterans. Um, it was a great day, and I just like to thank everybody who was involved in that. Um. Also, you know, Memorial Day is Monday. And I know a lot of people say, well, that marks the first day of the unofficial start of summer. But it is a somber day. But yet, you know, all across the country will, you know, there'll be barbecues, there'll be people at the beach. Nobody really thinking of why they have that day off. It's unfortunate, and I really wish that Memorial Day and Veterans Day could be swapped. And have the somber day in November. This way, you know, if, if, if Monday was Veterans Day, nobody could argue with, you know, your barbecue, with your hot dogs and your beer, and going to the beach, right? You're celebrating the, the veterans that, that served and that we all know. Uh, but just keep in mind, and, you know, we're not gonna change anything, it's, it is what it is, of society works nowadays, we you know, go to the beach and we have barbecues and parties, but, uh, take a minute and, and recognize why you have that freedom. And we celebrate the people who died in battle. Not your neighbor who happens to be a veteran, not his dad. Although, you know, you want to thank him for his service, and like, it's, you do that every day, but, you know, remember why you have that day off. Remember why you, you live in the greatest country on earth. And that's because all those people fought to preserve that. And that's what we remember on Monday. So, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Ralston.
Thank you, Supervisor. Um, I'll start with, uh, the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, from this superintendent parks, they've installed netting in between the two paper, four courts at Stevens Avenue Park. Park courts are getting quite a bit of use and many compliments, um, from those using them. Uh, keep in mind that those courts are for residents of the town of Walk Hill. And, and residents should be, um, given priority when they go in there to use them. I know other people have used them, and, and they're using them with residents, but, um, we want to make sure that our residents get first priority to those courts. Um, they finished their resurfacing of the tennis courts. Tennis Court Number One at Circleville Park and they're looking to resurface the Court Number Two very soon, in the near future. They've aerated and seeded three soccer fields at Circleville Park as well. And had a good turnout for the touch and truck as Congressman Coin uh, mentioned. Daily mowing and trimming all the parks and facilities and raking and lining the ball fields weekly along with the soccer field. The lake and paddleboard, uh, paddle boating will be open starting this weekend. And it will be open on the weekends only until June twenty-fourth. Then it will be open seven days a week through Labor Day Weather Committing. Uh, as mentioned previously, Memorial Day, Monday twenty, Monday twenty-seven. And uh, that parade unfortunately has been canceled due to the weather. For our police committee, the staff currently of our police department is fifty-four strong full-time um, police officers. Our rest record to date is up forty percent. That's four hundred and fifty-three versus two hundred, three hundred and twenty-two for twenty twenty-three. Uh, parking summons uh, is up two hundred and fifty-four percent. That's one thousand five hundred and twenty-six for twenty twenty-four versus four hundred and thirty-one for twenty twenty-three. The department and parking enforcement has been very, very busy. Uh, and it's a shame that we have to announce that. Because if you notice, and I've noticed it myself, is people um, lately have a disregard for handicap parking. I see folks parking in the handicap parking throughout the store, shopping malls and, and supermarkets in the handicap parking with no tag whatsoever and, and no regard to they knowing that it's handicap parking, but it's convenient for them. So I'm glad that, that we're enforcing and, and issuing those, those citations. The next Town of Walk Hill Community Com, Community Council meeting will be held on Thursday, June sixth at seven P M at Town of Walk Hill Town Hall. During our May second meeting, the Police Community Council recognized Orange County District Attorney Dave Bubler as recipient of the twenty twenty-four Barbara Alvarez Humanitarian Award. Police Officer Matthew Malaki as twenty twenty-three Police Officer of the Year. And Police Officer Ian Holmes as Officer of the Quarter. As well as Police Officer Charlie Canada as Officer of the Quarter. So congratulations to those officers and congratulations to Bishop Attorney Dave Bubler for those awards. Our youth coalition meeting will be held on Tuesday, June eighteenth at seven P M at the Town of Walk, Walk Hill Community Center. And during the two fifth Orange County Executive's Youth Awards Luncheon, several of our adult volunteers will be recognized. The recipients of the Betty Jane Grundy Asset Builder Adult Volunteer Award are as follows. Carlos Guadalupe, Joanne Guadalupe, Ruben Rodriguez, and Leslie Rodriguez. And those four individuals will be recognized at that event. For our accreditation update to help facilitate the ongoing process of maintaining the policies and training standards required under the state standard, the town has provided funding for the adoption of Lexapro software. This program software will be, will reduce the extensive number of hours that would otherwise be necessary to complete the ongoing maintenance. And part of this software is as, as our policies get updated based on the requirements from the state. Because there's always changes to our policies and, and across the board on, on other platforms. But those policies will then be implemented and instituted into our program and into all our documentation for those updates. And it will automatically send messages to the officers that they either have to review the policy and sign off on it or take some kind of training for it. So it's all part of our accreditation and keeping it up to date with our preservation. Because of the great work of Detective Kristen DiNapoli, the Police Department received a grant in the amount of seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. The funds will be utilized to purchase three license plate readers, one three D crime scene, laser scanner, nine D handheld radios, two software applications, eight body worn cameras, a lighting system, and crime scene camera and firearms simulation training. Uh, I'd like to add in there as well, uh, I happen to know Officer Detective DiNapoli did not do it alone. And along with thanking him, I'd like to thank Michelle, uh, they, she does our grants, uh, Michelle Baker, and thank her as well. And she helps everyone with whatever grants they are out there. Uh, one of the initiatives that we're taking on is the gallery of more shopping listings. After meeting with county executives and the managers of the gallery of malls, the department will be spearheading initiative that targets organized theft. In June, we will partner with the state police, Orange County Sheriff's Office, and the Orange County District Attorney's Office to implement a new program to reduce retail theft from the gallery of malls. We see it across the country. And we can either sit back and keep watching it on TV until it seriously happens to us, which it has happened in, in not those large numbers, but uh, I think this shows that the department is being proactive. Instead of being, being reactive and trying to resolve and, and address this, this ongoing national issue. Uh, twenty twenty-four Town of Walk Hill Junior Police Academy. The Town of Walker Police Department is excited to share the date of the twenty twenty-four Junior Police Academy. The academy will run for four one-week sessions from eight to three P M. The academy will cover activities including drill lessons, physical fitness, character and safety lessons, guest lectures, lectures, crime scene investigations, court procedures and tour. Team building exercises and CPR, first aid training and much more. The session starts followed. Session number one will go from July eighth to July twelfth. And that age group of those cadets will be grade three to five. Session two will be July fifteenth to the nineteenth, and those cadets, the age group will be three to five. Session three, July twenty-second to July twenty-sixth, those cadets' age group will be six to eight. And the last session is August twelfth to August sixteenth. And those cadets are also age grades and, I've been saying age, grades, six to eight. So replace the word age with grades, so grades three to five. Uh, we're good. We're back. Um, the last mention, a customer point touched on a few of the events I won't. But the last that was not mentioned is July third, we will continue to have our fireworks and celebration. It will be at the golf course and that will be July third. From the gates will be open at six P M at the golf course, of course. And this year, it should be a great show. Uh, my understanding is the people that are uh, doing the, the display will also be using drones. Uh, if you watched the Macy's Day Parade, Macy's Day Celebration last year, they used drones and it was amazing. Um, last but not least, I wish everyone a happy and healthy Memorial Day weekend as, as Commissioner Coin mentioned. Remember those people, why we have that day. I think the best way you can do it, it, it is by celebrating with your family and acknowledging that they made it possible for us to celebrate with our families in a safe country and a safe environment. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So it's Wednesday, July third, the final.
Yes.
Councilman Vanella.
Good evening to everyone. Um, my committee is in the adult course. Um, they've been working up on the grounds, uh, upkeep, uh, keeping the range uh, open and course open. Driving range has new golf balls. Uh, currently, the Town of Walk Hill Golf Course is offering summer camp to kids. Uh, looking to improve the golf game. If you're looking for a catered event, thank the Town of Walk Hill uh, Golf Course for that. Um, uh, again, Wednesday, July third, will be the Fourth of July Celebration at the Town of Walk Hill Golf Course. Uh, and further note, in honor of Jewish Heritage Month, uh, we should express about our society that there really is no room for hate, that everyone should, if you have a conflict with someone, that's fine, word to the grave, discuss, come to some resolution. But hate speech has gotta stop. In honor of Memorial Day, I wish uh, to reflect to the freedom is that we have is not free, it was fought for and paid for by those fallen heroes. Um, another note, Memorial Day, you're gonna see a lot more motorcycles on the road. Keep a vigilant eye on, so this way, uh, you don't clip a motorcycle or he doesn't look beautiful. And uh, Father's Day is uh, six, sixteen this year. I wanna wish all those dads out there a very happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you Supervisor. So.
Oh, that was quick, John. Thank, thank you.
I won't be twenty minutes. For the month of April, the building department did a hundred and twenty-nine permits, issued ninety-one certificates. Toll fees collect were eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Dressed thirty-seven complaints and carried out uh, uh, one thousand and ninety-one inspections. Water and sewer, as always, the crews had to repair several water main leaks, but they always do a great job, so a big thank you to them. Uh, the fire hydrant flushing we did in the spring did identify uh, multiple hydrants that needed repairs, currently being carried out. In addition to some that need a total replacement, which is actually good because we use a newer improved style and if you ever need to use a hydrant in an emergency to put out a fire, it's good to have the best phone possible. The department continues to work daily with engineers and contractors on projects throughout the town. The reason for that is to help prevent any damage to the infrastructure when they're dating. The Rikhouse Beach Well Field Expansion Project is still ongoing. Uh, no issues, the new wells are actually drilled. Um, and the final work on them should be completed shortly. The next phase is to design uh, any plant upgrades that are required to add these wells to the system, as well as design piping to get the water from the wells to the treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant clarifier project, as I've been mentioning for over a year now, is still moving along. The first clarifier is actually almost finished, should be done by the end of June. Um, once that's up and running, they'll be able to take the second clarifier down and reconstruct that one as well. The communication upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant, again, moving straightforward, no issues. The inward road and tower drive water tank rehabilitation projects are progressing. Um, even with the weather delays we've had, as you know, they have to sandblasted, clean the outside and paint, you know, to take care of any rust. Still moving along at a good clip. And the tower drive tank should be done, or the inward tank should be done shortly, but the tower drive one started, you know, right after that. And they're not taking anything out of service from them doing it, so it's no disruption to support or that, so they're not disrupting the service. The EPA mandated lead line service inventory. The project inspection is still going on. You might have had uh, someone from the department knock on your door. And if you haven't, you can expect that to occur. The employee then has to take pictures of the incoming water line and your meter. Um, sometimes residents haven't been home and information has been left in the door. If you are able to actually take a picture of the water line coming into your meter and your meter and you email it to the water department, then they don't have to come in your house. And it actually helps us out a lot because we have to do everybody and uses municipal water. So if that's possible, please do that. And um, that has occurred several times again, so it's a big thank you. It helps us in a huge amount. And I just wanna mention that there was an alert that went out on the town's notification system. And it's really only the residents that live and, or that use the water that are gonna have people come to their house. So if you don't have municipal water, people just disregard that notice. And as always, the operation and maintenance at the wastewater water treatment plant continues twenty-four hours a day, two hundred and sixty-five days a year. So a great job by all those employees. Comments first from Memorial Day. Uh, I have to say, you know, you guys know I'm an educator and we say the pledge every morning. And it's very disheartening to see so many students that refuse to stand or acknowledge the flag or stop in the hallway when they're walking, um, just to stand there. And I used to be able to say something, but today you can't do that. Um, so it really, really bothered me because the freedom that we have was, is because of all these people that sacrificed their lives so we could go on and do what we do and enjoy your barbecues and everything else that we take for granted. So, again, it's not a happy Memorial Day. It's not even a somber Memorial Day. It's just acknowledge the fact that people gave the ultimate sacrifice so we can enjoy the freedoms that we have here in this country. So please remember that. And um, you know, you heard Councilman Coy say it's, you know, not the vet's day. I still say thank the vet whenever you see him, every day, because again, it's those people that made us be able to do what we appreciate to do in this country. The ceremony, because the parade is um, not gonna happen on Monday, is eleven A M at the Elks Lodge. It would be great to see everybody there. I have to say, you know, as an educator, it's graduation season. Um, a lot of college kids already did graduate and, you know, high school kids are right around the corner, which means graduation parties and events and stuff. Um, you know, in the twenty-seven years that I've been teaching, we've personally buried students in excess of thirty-four. So please be extra careful when you're doing that stuff. I know it's a great time of the year. When you're eighteen, you're invincible and you think you know all the answers. I know I did. I wish I could go back to eighteen and get those answers. It don't happen now. But, you know, please be careful. Be extra careful. Everybody's really proud of you. And just do everything you can to, you know, make the world a better place. Father's Day, Sunday, June sixteenth, uh, you know, just like with Mother's Day, I have to give a big shout out. None of us would be who we are without our parents. Um, you know, even if they really weren't involved or if they were super like helicopter parents, they still made us who we are. So thank them, hug them, kiss them. You never know, you might not see them again. And um, I have to say thank you. You heard Councilman Coin mention the Howells Dry Culvert Replacement. Uh, I just wanna say a big thank you to Bill with the Guns, our Highway Superintendent and the Highway Department. Um, for years, I've got a lot of complaints from the neighbors there, because that's my ward uh, about the, the water overflowing, the roadway because the existing pipe was too small to take the flow. The heavy rains that we've been getting lately, you know, with the increased storms. And um, they were able to do it once things freed up. And I promised them that would happen this year and took care of it right away. So they did a great job, put two pipes in. They can handle the flow. They have it going in a straight way without it turning, so the flows are restricted and the water can be, you know, taken off and not flooding people's properties and washing out the road. So a great thank you there. And I just have to say, uh, congratulations to Megan Conboy. I've known that young lady um, for the twenty-one years of her life, probably twenty or nineteen of them. She's been friends with my son and watched her grow up. And she's a very good person, so I think she'll be an asset to the police department. So I'll say thank you there. And uh, that's it. Thanks. Look, not even ten minutes.
Fifty-nine seconds. Your teachings should know more about twenty. I, I do have one last comment. I apologize. There you go. And, and it, it looks like I'm gonna have some time to do it. But I wanted to comment, last night we had a presentation on the uh, the massive plan review and, and the current draft that's there. Oh, you can say your words as well, but there. I, I just wanna make a point here. It's, I encourage everyone, if you're home listening, you see this meeting later, to go out to the Town of Walk Hill site and pull the draft that's there and read it. Bring your questions. Next week, we start public participation. It's gonna go on for um, several weeks after that. Because we wanna hear from the public. I think the committee, um, uh, my friend and colleague, Mr. Johnson and Stephen Elliott, they did a great job in getting these folks and working together with these folks. Um, but it really answers a lot of questions and concerns that people have had. And the one thing I wanna emphasize here is it also responds to the misinformation that's been put out there by a small group of people that either don't understand or just wants to instill fear in people. Uh, but to that, I say, read. The facts are the facts. There's no, you can't make this up. There's no lying here. It's out there. Read it. Bring back questions. Bring back comments. Because it's draft and we need to hear from the folks. Uh, keep in mind that, you know, when, when we look at changing a zone or, or, or description of a zone, it's not just a certain area that you may live in that impacted, it may be impacted in, in a positive or negative way, let's just say positive, but that zone carries throughout the town. So we, we need to look. So we need to look at how it affects other areas in the town. And that's why I say, read what's there and bring it back to us and bring back your comments. But I hope that for those people that have been worried and concerned because of the misinformation that's been spread, hopefully this puts some sense of peace of mind for them. So thanks again to the committee and the work that they've done on this so far. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor.
Add another five minutes?
That's okay. That's a good one.
Yeah, otherwise. So first, we had a touch of truck the last couple, two weeks ago. Huge success. Weather was great. Lot of kids out there. And we had the quiet hour from ten to eleven, and as soon as eleven AM, all those ones started going off. And it was loud, Circleville. So last night, like Councilor Valentin said, we had Master Plan Committee present their recommendations. And I think that's the point. Recommendations to the public and to the town board of what they have been working on for the last three years. A lot of work went into it. These are individuals who are, just like everyone who's in the audience, online, regular folks in the town, who took their time to work on the master plan for the town. And they did a tremendous job. And if anyone gets a chance to go on, they look, look at it, read it. It is straightforward what they are recommending. We are having that public hearing next Wednesday at seven thirty right in this room. We want people to come out and have quality discussions on the zoning for the town going forward. Couple of events coming up. June nineteenth, June Team will be having a celebration in the Galleria North from one to two thirty. And on June twenty-second, we will have our fishing derby. That brings up ten AM up at Circle Road Park. Then, like I was stating before, the fireworks on July third, there's going to be a drone show. Looking forward to that. Summer hours for the town starts on June twenty-fourth. So June twenty-fourth to Labor Day, it'll be eight AM to four PM. It's going to be the time for Town Hall. So it's before our next board meeting, so I wanted to make sure that we get that out there. And earlier, Councilman Valentin said something about, you know, meeting with the county in regards to the retail tap. So recently, we had a press conference with US Senator Schumer. And one of the things that they're looking to do, you know, retail tap is big. It's happening. It does happen here. We have a lot of retail and the RECO app. They're looking to use the RECO app as some of these organizations that are actually going out there and creating all this stuff. And not just state, just in the country. And you see it. We see it all the time. If anyone had a chance to go into New York City, a lot of the stores are closing because they can't keep up with what, and we never seen people stealing and stealing. So just want to put out there that the county, we're looking at it, the county's looking at it, the state is looking at it, and the country is, meaning the Senate. So in regards to Memorial Day, it is a day that we need to take a moment to reflect on why, why we're so blessed to be in this country and to be proud because the men and women of our sacrifice, we have to do that. This is not one, the best country in the world. And we got there somehow, and it's because the men and women of our sacrifice. So. Last, my comments to add to Councilman Valentin's, we do not have that hatred. We need to come together as a society. We have too much going on. And they just, you know, people have differences of opinion, and we should be allowed to have differences of opinion. As you should, and we don't need to say true, which is what's important to bring the rabbi in today to show that the town does support Israel and Jewish community. Did I miss anything? Oh, yes. And it's known that I lost my mother recently, and, you know, it's Mother's Day soon after she passed. And now it's Father's Day. I lost my father. If you do have your parents, please take a moment to give them a hug, give them a go. And let them know, thank them for what they've done to make us who we are. And every day, every morning I get up and I thank my parents, you know, I think they're healing me because they're all the ones that are responsible for me being here. So thank you, Mom and Dad. With that, we're going on to Town Clerk.
Thank you. I don't have too much tonight. Steve, who is from the Animal Rights Alliance, was here today. And a lot of people know, a lot of people don't know. We were just in a program with them where for twenty-five dollars, you can bring your cat and get it spayed or neutered. Steve was here today. Like I said, we were our certificates on the town board for, I think, probably about eight years now, has allowed a budget line for this. It's a very well-received program. Like I said, it's twenty-five dollars. You come here, you get the certificate from us, you pay us the twenty-five. The town puts up the other portion of it, and then you make your appointment with Tara. They also have a low-cost vaccine clinic that they run every Thursday right down the road here on Tower Drive. And they also have low-cost spending of dogs. Because we all know veterinary care can be very expensive. They have veterinarians there. It's not that it's just anybody. They are actual veterinarians that do all the work. And there are a lot of people in the town, a lot of people everywhere. They have like a random cat that comes in their yard and they feed it or they bring it in sometimes in the wintertime. You can borrow a trap from us, or you can borrow a trap from Tara. Trap the cat, bring it there, get it spayed or neutered. And that will help the community because there are a lot of places, especially for someone healthcare, where there are these cat colonies living. And the old cat lady, and it's very sad. When you see them on the side of the road in the wintertime, you see them all huddled, you know, next to a car. The more that we can get spayed or neutered, one of our court lady right now has got a couple kittens that showed up on her porch. So you want to go on the cat, just catch it and bring it to us. And the other thing, Mr. Johnson, you might be aware or might know of her, but there's a lovely lady who lives in Washington Heights, and she's lived there forever, Mrs. Van Kelp, who is a beautiful lady with beautiful white hair. She comes to every memorial event we have at the Lefferts Park. And on May twelfth, she was at our, on the thirtieth. And her granddaughter, usually brain serve. And on May twelfth, she was ninety-nine. And she had a big party, and she is planning on being around on May twelfth of twenty twenty-five because she wants to have a bigger cake, which is a hundred. So if we see her at the Memorial Day service, she just loves when people tell her happy birthday. They tell her, when you see her, you're going to say, that lady was not ninety-nine because she is absolutely beautiful. And like I said, she's been here her whole life. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have Deputy Chief Spandau. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Town Board members. Other than what Councilman Valentin had spoken about, we have a carnival coming up, or there is a carnival coming up with Galleria, starts this weekend. So just use caution driving in the area. Also, there'll be an ongoing high school graduation parties at various establishments in his town. And please use caution when traveling in those areas.
Thank you. Next, we have public participation, three minutes. Anyone in the audience?
I'm here tonight because I'm here about the Bloomingburg Cemetery. I don't know.
Just push the button on the bottom. She might up screen.
Okay. I have a problem with Bloomingburg Cemetery, and I'm not the only one. There are a lot of people from the cemetery that are not happy. Ever since the Town of Walk Hill bought that cemetery, it has gone downhill. First thing, it was when you put a sign in the cemetery that said, where babies come to be born. Okay? We called, a bunch of us had to call. It was taken down. The second thing is, I don't know who, what company was mowing at the time, but at Christmas time, they went to the cemetery a couple of weeks after Christmas and took everything off of everybody's graves and threw it away. I have stuff at my son's grave that I put there every year. And every year I put more ornaments or whatever. I do that for him because I need to. And it was thrown away. And I called, and nothing was ever, I had never even got it. I'm sorry. I got nothing. Okay? Then my son's grave was desecrated in March. Somebody who's buried next to him, whoever digged the burial or I don't know, whatever they were doing, threw all my son's stuff into a pile in the middle of the cemetery, of his grave. I came here because I was such a mess. I was a mess. Because that's my baby in that grave, and it was desecrated. I got a phone call a couple of days later, which I thought was wrong. That was my child, and I should not have to wait for a phone call. Okay? I left here that day and went to the troopers' barracks and filed a complaint. Okay? Then, the cemetery is such a mess, not now. Because I went to social media and I put it on social media, the pictures of what that cemetery looked like. It has never, ever been like this. Never. And I feel like I'm just, like you're trying to pacify me by telling me it was the weather or whatever. It's not just the weather. I've mowed mine lawn eight times, six times since then. There's no reason why he could not have been there. Now, I heard what you said earlier. He had an illness. Okay, when I'm sick, I call and say. And that cemetery was left there to be a foot high. And it's not right. I'm there several times a week, and I have to go there with a weed whacker to take care of my son's grave. I shouldn't have to do that. And I shouldn't have to call here and complain when things aren't done. You know, I spoke to the guy that mows the lawn. I did. I spoke to him. And he told me, and he asked me what he could do. And I told him, how about your job? That's all I'm asking, is to do your job. And he told me he would. Well, he didn't. And I spoke to him before, when my son's grave was desecrated because I was a mess over that. And then he doesn't mow. And it looks horrible. The grave next to my son still has no dirt in it, still has no seed. That should have been done. That woman was buried in March. That should be done by now. It's not. I was there again today. It is not done. And there are several others that are not done. What can you do? I have no idea. I just feel like nobody's listening to me. And the other people that have called and complained. And that's all we want. We want somebody to listen to us, and we want somebody to take care of the cemetery. I don't want to have to come here. I don't want to have to complain. I have better things to do. You know, I don't want to do it. But that's my child, and I have nowhere else to go to be with my son, except there. My son is the one of the thirty-four that Eric was talking about. Okay, he was eighteen years old. So I'm here to ask you to plead, whatever you have to do, I don't know if you have to hire this guy or hire somebody else. I don't know. But he's not doing his job. He should have called somebody and said, listen, I'm sick, my family's sick, whatever. And then maybe something could have been done. I'll go and mow it. I don't have a problem doing that. I just want something done. I don't want to be pacified. I don't want to either, you know, just try and pacify me. That's not going to work with me. Not when it comes, not when I have to be the voice of my child because he no longer has it. I speak for Saki. They've been doing it for sixteen years. Every month, I'm at that jail. I just plead for something.
We, so you're aware, my understanding, we did not buy that cemetery. We did not buy it. We had no choice but to take it. Correct me if I'm wrong, that was done before I got here?
Yeah, that was actually, at the end of Q, I actually reached out to him after we discussed this to give the details. Because it was before I was on the board too. We all came on the board, mine and Steve, in two thousand and sixteen. And it started before that, because it's a process. The committee that was running it, they got older, older in their age. There was two members left, and they weren't able to do it, so they were going to abandon it. And the law that New York State has, that the cemetery becomes, you know, abandoned like that, the municipality has to take it over. It was fortunate, they did have a grant. They had some money left, they won a grant, they trust, they had some money left in the trust. So Dan worked out a deal where they took it over and been using that money to help mow it each year. I think, I don't know the exact numbers, but it's between twenty and thirty thousand dollars for somebody to maintain that. And, you know, that's been used up since, because I think it was sixteen when the resolution was passed. I think we were on the board and we were pretty fresh. That was one that we did. But I mean, it's tough because unfortunately, the state law says it's only going to be mowed once a year. And that's ridiculous because it's people's loved ones.
I spoke to the state, yeah.
You could never do that. And, you know, we're trying to do it, but I don't think there will honestly ever be more mowed more than twice, even like every two weeks. Only because the cost is so much. We actually did after, remember we spoke the first time a while ago? We discussed on the board, maybe, you know, is there a way to do it in-house? But again, it's difficult. We'd have to hire more people. The parks are short. But I mean, if somebody, there was, you know, there was like a group that wanted to take it over and manage it because the sale of the plots, really, there's not a lot of money there. A private cemetery is, you know, five thousand dollars a plot or ten thousand dollars a plot. And when they do that, then they have a lot of money to take care of a lot of things and maintain it. These ones sell for, you know, three, four, five hundred dollars, and most of them already sold a long time ago when they were like very, very cheap, a hundred or less. So it's unfortunate for the funds, but we hear you. I mean, we definitely hear you. I told you when we spoke that I would address it, and I did. Everybody listened. It was good. And, you know, we're doing what we can. And I know that, you know, I had Scott and Steve too, Morgan Fowler, you know, his day job. He plays real job, you know, he's the CO, you know, in prison. So the business is kind of like a side thing that he does. He's always done since high school he actually started. He does have guys that work for him. But, you know, I know there was some health issues, some other stuff. And that's not an excuse. You know, I know, but I don't think, you know, you're ever going to see it managed with like a golf course when this is still hasn't yet. You know, there was a way, like I said, if there was a group of people that wanted to do it, we would be happy to help them take it over, take whatever money's left in the trust and help them, you know, to manage it. Because it's not something that, you know, we can manage as good as it should be. Because again, it's people's loved ones. It's not a cemetery. Like you said, to go see, you know, your son, who was a great kid, I happen to know that. And I was just as heartbroken when that happened too, with Anthony. It just broke my heart. And, you know, to want to go there, it should be very nice and peaceful. So we do hear you, but we're doing what we can. So it's hard to know.
Just, thank you for letting us know. We don't drive them that way. We don't know what's going on. We put these things out, people get rewarded, and we hope you are doing the jobs.
Yeah, he didn't do his job until I complained.
So we're going to keep on talking this, and like you said, I will speak sometime. Turn it against the, if it happens again, then we have to look at other arrangements. And maybe getting rid of him and bringing someone else, and that's what we will do.
People that have loved ones in the cemetery that have actually said, we can do it. Do you know what I mean? I mean, if we got enough people, maybe if you put it out there, you know, send a letter to everybody that has people buried in the cemetery and. you know, send a letter to everybody that has people buried in the cemetery, and I don't have a problem doing.
But you're one person, you know, most people are gonna say, why would I have to go and give the, the owners in town a walker? That's the way it will come back to us. But we will address it and look at the options, and if this happens again, definitely, he gets definitely gone, and we will go on there. You know, absolutely, and again, sorry for your loss, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, we wouldn't know, we don't go up that way, what's going on.
You know, and it's unfortunate that you're going through this and you're seeing this, because you, you shouldn't have to, and hopefully you don't have to come back and, and, and tell us the same. To, to the supervisor's point, we're not there, we don't know, and we, we, like everything, uh, everything else, we depend on residents to let us know what's happening, because we can't be all over the place, but it, it is, and now that it's, it's, it's us to handle, it's not you to handle, it's not even people that are gracious enough to say they'll, they'll, they'll handle it. It's not for them, it's for us to handle, and, and we will handle it, and, um, hopefully you don't have to deal with that anymore.
Okay.
All right, stay safe.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's a good point, you know, I think we need to do a better job, that's just the bottom line. And also, I, I believe, and so does Councilman Johnson, that maybe that sign should not even be there.
It definitely shouldn't be there.
Well, it took them, where babies.
Yes, we know, we made that happen. I know, but, but even so, I don't like that it's there.
We've been looking to move.
We're looking to move that.
That's.
And, um, you know, we need to do a better job. We need to do a better job. Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Hang on. Picture name for recognition.
Supervisor, I don't know, incident. I need that, Ed Gadsen.
Sir, if you could talk into that microphone, please, sir.
My name is Ed Gadsen. Um, I'm the president and board of managers over at Inwood Hills County Millions. Um, Inwood Road, Upper Line, I think, I go through Turnpike. Um, a couple of years ago, they built a, uh, development, uh, Deerfield Commons, uh, across the street from us on the other side of the, right. Um, there's approximately, there's two hundred and sixty, eight, two hundred and seventy meters up there. Um.
Two forty-four. Two forty-four.
Two forty-four.
Yeah.
A lot. Um, and, uh, for whatever reason, uh, the, uh, uh, the town, or didn't require, or whether they, uh, required to do that, I don't know. But, um, uh, when they put in hillside, the years prior to that, uh, they put in sidewalks. Uh, Deerfield did not put any sidewalks. Um, and there are, um, lots and lots of children that live in, um, Deerfield Commons. Uh, they're after war, and I don't know why the buses don't go down, uh, in the roads, they just go, uh, push your turnpike. And it's probably a thousand feet, uh, from the entrance of Deerfield Commons to, um, Goshe Turnpike. Most of it is sidewalk, I would say maybe, uh, close to six hundred feet, the other four hundred feet are sidewalks, you know, curbs and sidewalks. Um, it's a very, very dangerous situation. They, uh, some of the, uh, children, some of the mothers walk their, uh, children, uh, to the bus, uh, and they'll walk through our parking lot, which is also a very safe situation. I think there's weird cars coming, running, buying out. Uh, but, um, the traffic on Inwood Road is, uh, has become quite substantial ever since they built, uh, those, uh, Deerfield. Uh, and, uh, the, the, the speeding there is horrendous, uh, they come flying down about forty, fifty miles an hour. Um, so, um, and we'd, we'd like to get some kind of protection there, speed bumps, sidewalks, something, uh, before uh, there's any, uh, you know, accidents, uh, that, that occur, we don't wanna see that. Um, it's, it's, it's not a good situation. Um, possibly if, if people have any conflict with the school boards, or ocean, or, uh, pine bush, to have the bus down Inwood Road to go to that development, because there's so many kids that get on that bus. Um, right now, they just stay on Goshe Turnpike. Uh, that's one issue, um. The other one is, um, there was a resolution that was adopted just about a year ago, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, regarding parking on Inwood Road. Uh, the resolution that was adopted back then, uh, stipulated that uh, there should be no parking on the south side of Inwood Road. There's, uh, no, uh, indication as to whether parking is allowed on the north side or not. Uh, about. Four or five weeks ago, the town came by and put up no parking signs on both sides. And as a result, the, um, there's a lot of cars that were parked on the north side, have tickets, have been getting tickets regularly. Um, and, um, I had spoken to Minister Ross here. And, uh, he mentioned that, uh, the town was thinking about adding a new resolution to stipulate no parking on the north side as well. Uh, that's fine, uh, but I think in the meantime, the, uh, the department, um, I, I don't believe they have authorization at this point, based on the resolution, you know. Um, I couldn't be wrong, but, um, I would just like to bring it to the attention that there's a lot of it is given. Um, and I, I don't think they're justified, but I think something that needs to be looked into.
Thank you.
Um, hang out after the meeting, I'll take down your information, I have a part to give to you. I'll meet you over the weekend, we'll, we'll take a look at the sidewalk situation, all right? And, um, see what we can do about that, all right?
All right. And with regards to the no parking, um, it was brought to my attention, I mean, we sent an email. Um, and it's something that we were looking, making no parking on both sides. Um, I was not aware they put it on the north side also.
Yeah, they, they do, so.
And then we had a complaint, but when it was on the south side, that nobody was getting a ticket. So now, when I saw that, we sent the cops out there, now they ticket everybody. So we will address it, probably for the next couple of weeks, we'll do a review, and probably in the four months, we'll, we'll have a conversation on probably one on the north and the south side.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, to give the, I. Uh, my name is Maggie Ilkum, uh, I'm also on the board for Inwood Hills County Millions. I just wanna add the one more thing. Uh, those traffic signs, we, we have three of them on each side. No arrows, just no parking anytime. They are spaced a byway from each other. So for, I know what's going on, but whoever comes from the different towns will have no clue where they can park. Uh, so maybe some kind of clarification, if you're going to decide to no park, um, north side and south side, maybe add something to it, no parking anywhere.
Who would have put a name on it? If it says no parking, that means you can't park the lanes of where, but there's three stopways.
Apart.
So no one can park, and my understanding, the reason they put the signs like that, that could be, you know, I'll find out from the highway. So that no one can park anywhere, they don't want people parking on that, on that road at all because of that. Especially on the south side, that was why I came about, south side was cars, and I drove by, and I saw all the cars.
It's a pride that always the dial.
So that's why that one's put on that side. Well, I go up there, and I'll take a drive up there and take a look and see what's going on.
Maybe the arrows. Yeah, maybe the arrows.
I was gonna say, if you wanna come with me over, over the weekend.
Yeah.
We, we can work out and figure that out.
Sadly.
If not, yeah, I'm prepared to look into all of that, so no problem.
Because in the future, people will not, they will not have a clue where can they park, when it stops, when it ends.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get it done.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Do. That being said, motion to adjourn.
Second.
On a favor.
I.